There we are.
Yeah, yes. I did, but then I'm on TV, you know, I can't.
Connect ourselves in.
I know.
Excited to be here.
Okay.
That's great, Gary.
Tearing apart my deck that used to be around our swimming pool. The liner died, so it was empty when the all that wind came along. Blew the side in, so we just took it out.
You know, we had an arrangement with the prior owner. We filled that pool using a fire truck so that we could use the water in there if we needed it.
Well, the pond's still there.
Yeah, the pond's.
The pond's still there.
Take a breath, Matt.
What's wet?
Breathe.
Okay, ready. It's been around today.
Well, I think it's close enough to the appointed hour, we may as well go ahead and get started. What did you say, Danielle? Do we expect any more members to be joining us? I know Lily sent an email around earlier saying that she would not be here, but do we know about anybody else?
Krista isn't going to be here. That's it.
But we do have a quorum, we've got five, right? Okay, call meeting to order then. On the agenda is December 16, meeting minutes. Those were sent out by email shortly after that meeting, as I recall. Anybody have any questions about it or anything we ought to clarify or correct before we take action on it?
The move approved the. The.
Okay. Second, I think we'll, we have sometimes taken the position that if there's no questions, we'll just declare them approved. We'll do that if there are no questions. Okay, the agenda for tonight, we've all had in your packets, we've got three matters to discuss, first one being zoning change case. Are there any specific items that we know of that need to be added to the agenda at this time? Hearing none, we'll declare the agenda to be okay then. Move on to public comment item on the agenda. Be assured that anybody that's here from the public will be given opportunity on each of the three agenda items to comment at that time, too. Is there anything that anybody wants to bring up that's outside those three agenda items?
Yeah, somebody on. Yeah.
This is Glenn Myers.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I had a question on the, well, both of the zoning issues, because I can't, I can't see the agenda at the same time as the Zoom meeting picture, but I don't know how to do that. Is there a zone change anticipated on on the third item? I think it's the container home zoning.
Second item.
Okay, is there a, are you considering a zoning change from something to something else?
There's not been anything asked for at this point.
Okay, that's kind of what's my other question in the application for a change. Thank you.
Glenn?
Glenn?
Yes.
Could you give us your address, please?
308 North Madison.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think 308 can be the correct number for that place, though.
His address for.
Does he not, is he not here visiting his son at the end of the block?
That's, that's correct.
Yes.
Wouldn't be 308, then. Not that it makes a lot of difference.
I understand which, which house he's representing.
Okay, it's the one clear at the far end, north end of the block, right? That's where his son lives.
Correct, our trust owns the house and my son's buying it from the trust.
Yeah, but it's not 308, surely.
Yes, it is. What it says on the house. What the deed says is 308 North Madison.
Okay. Well, I don't see how that can be, but anyway, there are several houses before that in that block, anyway, besides the point, I guess. Okay, any other public comment before we move on to the three business items? Okay, we will then move on to the business item number one, case Z dash 2022 dash 01 415 South Washington, the request for zoning change from R2 to CS. I presume you're here to speak to that. Here to give us little explanation or what, what's up there, what the reason for the, for the request.
At present time, looking at additional parking for the foundation. And so, other than that, that's about the extent of what we're planning for that is wanted to kind of help clean up, beautify some things there, but then also to look at putting in a parking lot. At this point, it's not been determined what kind of surface or top that would all be handled when the architects and then finish the site plans and then say, you know, and then submitted to approval for what kind of topping and that kind of stuff. At this point, the plan is to do it as a parking, a refill parking.
Just curious if, okay, ask question.
Sure.
About how many spots are you hoping to get roughly?
Don't have that right off hand, but on some of the preliminaries, I think it was another like 12, because they went like, they went kind of in the square and then left medians in some of the preliminary drawings. I don't know that that's the final, but in the preliminaries, you know, it was six or seven. So it was like 12 altogether, I think.
Okay, other questions or comments by commission members, and then we'll open it up to anybody else that is interested shortly. Okay, if not, anybody from the public have questions or comments about this particular request?
No, but everyone's looking at me.
You're the only one here that fits the description.
I was expecting to come in and see a picture like last time of what you guys were going to do, but it don't matter, the house is gone. I'm happy. You have no idea.
I don't have a parking lot picture, I just have the one that came included.
Have there been any concerns expressed by anybody, you know, city staff or anyone that has heard of it? Is it normal for somebody, something to be purchased, torn down, and then asked for for zoning regulations? I mean, should, I mean, for their sake, when to be better maybe to ask that before they bought all this property? And I mean, or is that just?
Certainly, certainly, it's not, not a given that they're going to give what they're asking for, I guess, in any, any case, but.
Right. Yeah, it might have been.
So they're sticking their necks out a little bit.
Might have been prudent to do that, but do you, but then do you, do you issue with the, you issue a zone change where there's still a dwelling? You know, with the, with the saying, well, yeah, we're going to tear it down.
I mean, I just, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just don't want to set a precedent of, you know, some other place, buying a place, building something, and asking for a zone.
Yeah, that's just, that's just a decision they made as a purchaser. It could be they just didn't like the looks of the house across the street, wanted to make it look better, even if they don't get a parking lot.
I just, I say I'm fine with, I just.
I guess the risk is on that end, it's not on the city's end, but that correct?
No, yeah, that's a personal decision by the buyer.
Could you have a parking lot in an R2?
No.
No. Okay. I'm thinking then.
And that's why it's on.
Right. Sure.
But no other neighbors have expressed concern, they've been notified, I'm sure, I know everyone's been notified.
Everyone's been notified, we've had no, no negative comment, no comments actually, other than we're glad to see the house. That's pretty consistent. That's been a consistent comment, yeah.
And the neighbors beside have been, we've been working on this for over a year, just to purchase something. And so, in working with the city and trying to understand what all we need to do, they've not been surprised by what we were doing, because we actually worked with Matt to try to see if we could relocate the house somewhere for several months. And several of those fell through, so we've been trying to be a good partner in working with the city and trying to figure out how we work through that. But we've also been able since that time to acquire a second piece of property. And so that's allowed us to, you know, not have to move as aggressively on the parking lot. And so, but it's all part of the plan, and so the architects are currently working on building that out, that we'll be able to add a later day approach for the other things that will be needed.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, would someone care to make a motion regarding this position of this request?
The move that we recommend approval of the zoning changes requested.
I'll second it.
Okay. One more chance, any other comments or questions? Not all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, Matt, would you care to fill us in a little bit on on container home zoning? We've seen a lot about it in the paper and so forth, and there was a meeting last week, I guess, about it, too, but.
Yeah, we had public, excuse me, we had a public comment period at the city council meeting on the 18th, just to, to just discuss it. And the developer Felix Ramirez was here, he was here actually at our last planning commission meeting, seeking conditional use, or the Airbnb, yeah. And so, you know, we had, we had quite a bit of conversation about it. I think most of the people who spoke about it had, yeah, there's some technical concerns, of course, with container housing. And then there were, I think, a lot more concerns about just aesthetics and kind of what the impact will be to property values, surrounding property values. There were questions about financing of these homes and some, some other kind of in the weeds, technical questions about it. By and large, I think the, the, the comments were fairly negative. We did have somebody who was positive about it, did come and speak about it. Most of the people in the, in surrounding neighborhood had, had probably the most critical comments, obviously, they're the most impacted. And so, what the city council decided to do was to refer it back to the planning commission, so you guys could have a chance to kind of hash it out and maybe potentially, potentially make a recommendation, if that's something you want to do. So you've got a wide range of options with this. If it's something that you, you know, you know, talking with the city attorney, the options are you could actually go back and amend the building code and completely eliminate the ability to do this, which is an option. You could, you know, on the other end of the spectrum, you could do nothing and kind of allow it as is, as it's written, which it's regulated through the building code, the standards which somebody has to meet in order to make a, a safe, habitable building. You can do some, some issues with zoning, if you wanted to, to limit it to certain types of zoning. You could also set it up to be a conditional use kind of situation, where if somebody wanted to do this type of home or come with this type of development, they would have to go through a conditional use process, much like we've done with the Airbnbs, for example. You know, and, and in that way, you would have an opportunity at that point to, you know, raise questions about aesthetics, put some, put some conditions on the, on the homes, as they have to be painted appropriately, they have to have, you know, foundations, whatever the conditions. So there's a wide range of options. There's not really, I don't know that there's a, a solid solution, other than we need to kind of hash it out and figure out what, what we think is acceptable and kind of where we want to go with it. So that's what we're asking the planning commission to look at today, and if, you know, we need more time to do that, we can do that. But what we'll probably end up doing until the issue gets settled is to, to moratorium, kind of issuing permits on those type of houses until we have some kind of clearer direction, which, you know, it could be a month from now, it could be a little longer, who knows? But I, I don't see that, you know, in this case, we've had one person who's expressed an interest in potentially doing it, and they don't currently own the property. It's still very much a fluid process, and we haven't seen a final plan with them. One of the requirements for a building permit for this type of construction is we have to have an engineered or architectural stamped set of plans that shows how these containers are going to be put together and that it's safe. And so, you know, we're, we're probably not having people honestly beating down the door to do this, it's more of an idea at this point. So that's where we're at, and you know, happy to answer any questions as best I can.
My question is, when we're talking about the confining it to specified zoning district. So currently, the trailer park, is that zoned any differently than any other residential lot in town?
It is, yeah, it's, it's zoned empty, it's a mobile home park.
So within that, does that, does that cover a container home or no?
Well, it, it does in a way, you know, the, the building code allows for alternate methods of construction. And so, Mr. Ramirez and his partner came to us early on, and we started discussing whether or not that, that we could experiment and try this type of construction under that alternate method of construction. And so, we agreed to try it in the trailer park.
Right.
And, and see how it was going to go.
Right.
So now the code has, we've adopted the new code that actually has language that allows that type of construction. It didn't before, so we're using that alternate method of construction caveat in the code to experiment with this, with this type of construction.
In the mobile homes.
In the mobile home park.
Because I, I think from what I have heard, and even I'll speak for myself, you know, I think it's, it's a great idea for the city of Hillsborough to be able to resolve our issue with needing housing for low income housing. Now, when I say that, I've heard some in contrary, that some of these homes maybe that will be placed on a residential lot could be, you know, eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To me, we're talking two different things. I mean, we're talking affordable housing, more like a rent, if you would, rent to, versus a home that's going to be sold and expected to be purchased and lived in, you know? So that was my concern, he's, so he is okay to continue to build those homes in the mobile park, mobile home park at this point. So now we're more talking about the residential lots.
Am I remembering correctly from last month's meeting that there's nothing in the code that prevents those being placed any place in any residential area in Hillsborough? There's nothing, it's not just the, the mobile home zone that, that would, that they could be put in now. As of the way things stand right now, they could go anyplace.
And that's what gives us some pause, you know, we're concerned about that.
Sure.
Want to be able to, it's a, it's a, it's a unique method of construction. And so we'd like to be able to have some controls over how and where it happens.
There are some cities, Hillsborough doesn't have a lot of internal definition as to what a house is or isn't, or what you, what type of house you can build and that kind of stuff. Some cities, you can't move a house from one location to another and put it on a foundation in that city. And some, you know, have other restrictions as far as building. My understanding of common housing types when I was growing up, you have the stick-built homes, and you have prefab homes, which are essentially stick-built homes built in a factory and then final assembly on location. And they've kind of considered the same thing, most places, although some places, again, will prohibit even that. Then you got manufactured homes, which are essentially kind of like a mobile home, but not intended to be really mobile. And then you've got mobile homes that, you know, they put on wheels and turn around, they kind of went away with the invention of RVs and that kind of thing. And then you've got the campers. And the, the, the mobile home part, my understanding was essentially either specifically mobile homes or manufactured homes. And I don't see, even though the code apparently, we're interpreting the container homes as being manufactured homes. But my impression was always that manufactured homes were manufactured initially with the intent of being a home. Where the storage containers are exactly that, they're a storage container that's been modified into a residence. I don't see that that fits in any of the other categories. And where do you draw the line as to what you can convert? Can you take the trailer of a semi, a semi-trailer and convert it into a home and say, well, that's a, same as a storage container home? Some places you've seen aircraft fuselages turned into homes. What category does that fall into? So I think we do need something that is specific, whether we allow them or don't allow them, that says this is not a manufactured home, this is not a prefab home. This is a, something else that was converted into a home and figure out what to do with that. But yeah, I don't see it falling into the.
Because it's none of those things that.
Right, it's none of those things.
Is anyone aware, has it been figured out how they are going to be taxed? Are they going to be taxed like a mobile home? Are they going to be taxed as real estate? Do we even know how it will go on the tax rules? Because that can also, that could help us with our decision of what we want to do.
They do not come with a title, do they, like a, like a mobile home would?
Correct, it's my understanding they don't. Now, they do have like a, the one anyway out at the mobile, at the park, it does have an identification plate on it, but very hard to see this one is anyway, but that could be cleaned off, or maybe, I don't know. But they do have an identification plate on them.
See, and that's what's, that's required by code for it to have that identification thing to be used. And it, it's, the code specifically refers to intermodal shipping containers. You know, so it wouldn't be an airplane fuselage or anything like that. That would, that would fall under that alternative method of construction, which is still in the code. But under that code language, it requires that data plate to be on there. And it doesn't give you a ton of information, but it, you know, it does give you some.
Well, it would give you enough to title it, I'm assuming. If, I, I don't know anything about how the county or the state does the titling of like the mobile homes and stuff, but I don't know if, if that's his.
I don't, I'm not sure either, but I think it's going to be real estate.
Yeah, no, mobile homes are titled as personal.
Right.
Yeah.
And right now, right now, they're treating the, the mini homes as if they're on, on a trailer, they're, they're doing them as personal property. But the county, I've talked to them when we were before the last meeting, and they're not sure how to do whether it's personal property or real property either. So right now, the county, I think, is treating them as personal property, but thinking about whether or not it, that's the correct answers. So.
I think it would depend if it was permanently fixed on a foundation, then, then it would probably be real property. But that's not a determination that we get to make, unfortunately.
Well, that, for a manufactured home or a modular home, it's determined whether or not the wheels and axles have been removed, whether or not it's considered real estate or personal property. Now, I do believe the one out of the trailer park has the trailer and the axles and stuff still under it, but I'm not sure whether they can be removed and.
Nothing, because they were never trailing.
Yeah, it shouldn't have, because it never had.
But how did they get it out, how did they get it?
They come in on a flatbed.
Flatbed and they crane it.
Okay, okay, all right.
Another distinction that could be made in this case to, to contrast them from mobile homes would be that typically a container house would go on real estate that's owned by the, the same person that owns the container, where a mobile home often rents a space in a trailer park, and the, the real estate belongs to somebody else.
Well, that would depend on how you made the comment of permanently, permanent foundation. How, I mean, we ran into that problem in the military in the Philippines when they turned the base back over to the Philippine government years ago. One of the agreements was if the United States left, all the permanent buildings had to remain. Well, they were going to put in new housing, so they brought in modular housing, bolted them down with like four bolts, and said, when we leave, we're taking these with us because they're not permanent. So if they bring in the modular housing and bolt it down, is that permanent or not permanent? And in case in point, the modular houses that we have are in a mobile home park, they happen to be owned by the same guy that owns the land, but they wouldn't necessarily have to be.
Not necessarily, the modular homes are the homes that you were talking about that are built off science and then brought in.
Yes. But the point, my point there was that even though, I mean, they weren't permanently fixed, so they were not defined as a permanent structure. So I'm not sure with, that we can define things as a permanent structure just because it's on a, on a foundation, if it's just bolted down and can be moved. The one, the house is only bolted down, but it's through every.
The ones that are there now are welded.
Okay.
They're welded down. That's pretty permanent.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen any plans for a proposed construction as to how it would be attached to the power.
That's kind of the hard part about this, is that we don't really know, we just have an idea, right? And so, we don't, the cart, I guess, is in front of the horse so far that I don't know that it becomes relevant, but we, we have an opportunity to do something now, if, if there's something to be done. But we have so many questions about what could potentially be there that we don't. We have, I can't really grounded in any fact and what we're actually going to see, so it kind of becomes this, it's more of a theoretical discussion at this point, because they may never, they may never put a home out there, and it may never happen, who knows? You may not end up with property, you may not end up putting.
So is now the time to be taking action on this, or are we better off to wait till we get that information from him? That would be my question, and should we table it until we have that type of information? I don't know enough about the container homes, other than what Felix has talked to me about. But there was still, when we had talked, there was still a lot of questions to be answered.
I guess one of the questions would be that if somebody did decide they wanted to do this and started doing it with the current rules and regulations.
Or lack thereof.
Or lack thereof.
Yeah.
What would the process be? And would they be able to do it without ever coming to the planning commission? If they were putting it on a residential lot that they owned and said, hey, it's just, you know, it's a prefab house kind of thing and I'm going to plop it here. Would they even have to come to the planning commission under the current?
I think the answer is no.
So if we wait and don't do anything, then that's the same as saying you can do what you want.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, I guess.
So I don't see that we've got the cart before the horse. It's just, we've got the horse out front and not sure what kind of cart.
I wish there was someone that was um, maybe more educated on these homes or has built these homes that maybe us as a committee could visit with or they could come in and talk to us about.
There were some that were placed in Wichita. Duplexes or apartments.
Yeah, they turned into an apartment complex, yeah.
And early on, like two years ago or more, I went and talked to the building inspector in Wichita and asked about what kind of rules. And he was really cagey. I didn't, I didn't get any good information from him whatsoever. So I, you know, we went and, I went and looked at the, the commercial installation there. What's it called?
Revolution.
Revolution. And it's real interesting, you know, um, but it's up, it's all on peers. And, you know, they've done all kinds of stacking and cutting and, and molding and it's really interesting. But, you know, clearly there was an engineer involved because, you know, the, the intermodal containers were altered a lot. And then, and then you can see reinforcing steel, you know, holding those things up and.
Well, some of them, I mean, if you look on the, on the web and look at some of these like that are built out on the east coast or the west coast, they are, I mean, very nice. But they're not forty thousand dollar homes either.
Right. Yeah. Those, they're expensive.
Right. I mean, I realize that some of that risk is on, you know, whomever it is that's developing them. But at the same time, Hillsborough doesn't want a lot with a container home on it that was just walked away from either. Now, I'm not saying Felix would do that, because I don't think, I mean, he wouldn't. But that's just something we have to think about going forward. I don't know what the interest would be in a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty thousand dollar home if it was a container home.
Depends on how much it looks like a container as opposed to looking like a home.
When here again, we go back to, we don't know what his.
And that's, that's one thing about the commercial thing down in Wichita is that it's commercial. And yeah, it looks like a bunch of containers stacked on top of each other, but that's really not a problem in a commercial area. But if you stick that in the middle of a residential area, then it becomes a concern as far as land values around it. And, you know, we don't want to get into a position of being a, you know, what does it look like? And do we like the looks of it to prove something? But at the same time, you don't want something that has a high probability.
So then that you're talking about then a conditional use permit is what I would say is that.
You know, and I need to point out that, um, Mr. Pancrits pointed out, uh, there is a, a mention in the code about residential homes cannot be sided with corrugated metal. So that, you know, that, that's a concern right away. And, you know, I applaud him for pointing that out. That, that was one that got by me. You know, so that, that's, that's a concern that, that.
So what's the definition of corrugated metal?
Shaped like this, you know.
I would dare say that.
If the corrugation's that far apart.
Whoever, whoever drew up a regulation like that was thinking Strongbarn probably and not, not container.
Yeah. And that, you know, the thing is, is there's, there's not a whole lot out there. It's new, you know, it's, it's a new method of construction.
Who did you speak to when you spoke to the county? Talked to the county treasurer or the planning?
I just went down and talked to folks down in the, the assessor's office.
Yeah, I think it's kind of on the, it's a, like Ben says, it's something, it's new and it's different, right? And that, that creates a lot of, of apprehension, obviously, and because we don't know, we don't know what's going to be.
If anybody has not been inside the one at the park and the, I mean, it is nice on the inside. It's very nice.
That one was pre-manufactured and brought in as it is, pretty much. And that gave me, that, that gave me a little bit of concern because I didn't get a chance to inspect it. I had, I had no idea what type of wiring was in there, what the plumbing looked like and, you know, there's. And so that's why I really wanted the, the next ones to be built on site so that I could inspect them, you know, and make sure that they're safe.
Or there needs to be an organization like for mobile homes that.
That would regulate.
Would regulate that.
And I don't think there is.
No, probably not at this point. That's too new.
Do either of you from city staff have a, an opinion to express about what, what you see is being needed at the present time then and on the matter?
If, if you were looking for a recommendation, I would say because there are so many questions, uh, I would probably set it into a conditional use situation. Uh, and then you can evaluate exactly what you're talking about. Is it, what does it look like? What are, you have to, you have an opportunity at least to understand some of those answers before a final permit. I don't like doing that because it, it feel like that, you know, if somebody wants to, if, if you're just doing one, you know, that takes ninety days essentially adds to the top to the process, which may not be that much, but.
And it could be kind of a subjective thing. This one may go okay, but the next one might be, might be turned down and you might have to defend your.
You get, you get on some shaky ground, but I don't think we have enough information to really say we need to do this, this and this either. So. You know, if you put it into a conditional use thing, you could at least evaluate it as it comes. And then maybe after you've seen one or two, you could consider some more permanent.
Can that condition on use that we would possibly pass before a twelve or eighteen month period? Or no?
I don't know. As far as how long does it go? I think even, well, if you're talking about a home you're building, I think it has to stay with the home until.
Well, I think she's talking how long the conditional use requirement would be there.
Oh, okay.
It's whatever conditions you put.
Yeah, it would be defined by the.
It's a conditional use, you set the conditions.
You know, is the thought there that somebody at the end of the period could do something to it or?
You're right.
Yeah. And then you get into some interesting issues about code enforcement and, you know, do we want to really regulate? I don't want to regulate aesthetics on homes. I don't care what color house you pay here. You know, I'm, I'm, we're concerned about health and safety. That's where our issue is. And, you know, we don't want to be the arbiters of what is and isn't good looking.
Yeah. Cause what you might find may be totally different than what I might like. Ben, do you have a take on it?
Yes, um, I would suggest perhaps a moratorium. Until we can figure out exactly what it is we want to do. I'm not against the conditional use. Um, that, that seems like, that seems like a way that we could at least open the door and let Mr. Ramirez get started with this project, perhaps. But I'm, I'm just concerned about how it's going to go. And so I would like to have an opportunity to do a little, do some more research, all of us and the city council and come up with a set of rules that would be, that is workable for everybody.
And I, and I understand where you're coming from on that. So that we could allow Mr. Ramirez to continue with whatever. With the conditional use. Can then at some point we come back and change that conditional use if we do come up with?
Think you can retroactively apply a new set of.
Not to, not to his conditional use. But I mean, going forward, if we, if we have the opportunity to do more research and to come up with more definitive.
Yeah. Conditional, conditional uses are individual based situations. So, so there, at any time, I mean, every case that comes is independent. And we could just establish whatever conditional uses or whatever conditions we, we want to establish. My understanding though on conditional uses is that you can't really say no to somebody that requests a conditional use as long as it's an approved conditional use. You can put conditions on it, but you can't say no, because you're allowed to put conditions. So my concern with, I like the moratorium idea of just not allow anybody to do anything with, with container homes until we come up with more information. Because my concern would be if somebody came in next month and said, we want to do it, we don't know what conditions to put on it. And yet we've got to put conditions in a recommend, basically recommend approval with those conditions. So I think we're better off with a moratorium at this time and continue to work on what kinds of conditions we're concerned about and why we're concerned about, because they have to be justified. I mean, you know.
What are, are we in a position now to where we, if the commission is so inclined to make a recommendation to the, to the council that, that a moratorium be put on?
Yeah, that would be a recommendation to council. They can it would basically be a directive from them after the fact that they could vote on to say, let's put a moratorium on it for sixty days, ninety days, whatever it is, until we can establish more rules or condition. Go from there. I mean, then we'll just defer back to you guys to think about rules and conditions.
Yeah, you don't want the moratorium to be indefinite.
No, certainly not. I don't, you know, I don't think it's, it's balanced because you don't want to necessarily discourage somebody.
That's, that's a serious, that's a serious thing issuing a moratorium, you know, it could have consequences.
But on the other hand, if we put a ninety day moratorium on it and felt at the end of that time or near the end of that time that we needed a little more time, we could request the council another thirty days or sixty days or whatever.
And with a moratorium, there's nothing to stop somebody coming in and requesting. They could still request to do something and the answer would be, well, there's a moratorium right now, but we'll go ahead and look at what you want to do.
So we just don't issue the permit.
And you just don't issue the permit.
Plans, we could look at their proposal. We could have a, we could have, uh, you know, development meetings, you know, and
It just could not be.
Keep the thing going.
Until such time as to, and if, if, you know, in discussing what we wanted to do and, and that kind of stuff and had a proposal for the, the city council, we can go ahead with that proposal before the moratorium ends. And if they like it, they can put a stop to the moratorium. So it gives a lot more flexibility, you know.
So if someone came in today and started putting a, didn't come for a permit and just brought in a container home, do we, does the city have any right to make them move it or?
If they didn't get a permit, then I would issue a stop work order. And, uh, you know, they would have to stop and they would have to either apply for a permit, you know, and go through the proper channels before they could continue work.
Cause they'd still need a building permit, even if it was just allowed. They just wouldn't have to come through us.
But building permits required regardless.
Well, on the saving grace with the code as it's written is that it does require, i- in this type of container home, it does require that stamped set of plans.
If it's more than one container. That's, you know, these, these out here, the trailer park is just one container. But if it's more than one container making up the dwelling, then it has to be engineered and, and with by us, by a licensed engineer or architect with their stamp on the plan.
I believe I asked at the last month's meeting and we're not aware of any action or regulations that have been placed on container homes by other towns around. Uh, it's new enough that, that nobody else has dealt with it either. Am I remembering correctly?
The city of Marion has, uh, they have a prohibition on using it as a home, but they will allow shipping containers to be used as storage.
In any zone?
Yeah, they, they've flat out prohibited it.
Well, but use, use as storage in any.
Oh, uh, that I can't answer, Ken. I think it has, I know it has to be licensed and approved, but I don't know. Yeah, that's essentially what it means, so. They've got specific language saying, we're not going to allow it as a home.
Don't go that far.
Yeah, that's maybe a little extreme.
But I mean, that's their choice. Well, and they haven't adopted the twenty twenty-one code either, so it would be, it would fall under their building inspector to approve that type of alternative construction. And if the, their building inspector doesn't approve that type of alternative construction, then you can't do it.
Okay, are we at a point to propose some action?
Let me just ask one more thing. Was there at the city council meeting following our planning commission meeting about the recommendation for Airbnb? Container, storage container out there at the trailer park. Was there, was there any real issue with what we recommended or what they thought or?
Uh, passed straight through. I don't recall there being any real conversation about it negatively.
So they weren't against the, per se, the containers, storage container being used that way in that location anyway?
Right, right. Yeah, I think the, you know, the general consensus from the council and, and talking with them is that they, they, they want to figure out a way to do it if it's possible and it makes sense. But, you know, if it doesn't, then we're not going to get into that. Cautiously optimistic, I guess, is how I would say that. They don't want to discourage development, you know, somebody wants to make that investment. You know, and obviously we have a need for housing and so.
So if this is developed out there, who puts the streets and all that? Does the city do that? If this is developed on Third Street.
They're open.
Does the city put in the streets or?
Uh, yeah, it would be, right now there are special assessments on those lots for the sewer. And there would be charges for any kind of electrical infrastructure, water and stuff like that. Uh, we did waive, we have a policy that waives some of those costs for new construction, for new residential units as a way to kind of spur that. Um, so there would be some, but if there were, if they would have to put a street in or something like that, Eddie, they would have to do a, a special assessment. So that actually is a pretty great spot because it's already got a road there. There's no specials, no specials for the roads, the water lines existing. The only thing they had to do was the sewer. Um, and so they, uh, when Russell Grove's plotted that, they put the sewer in. And so those, those lots do have specials on them.
So getting back to not by putting this moratorium on so that we don't completely put a halt to what Felix is wanting to move forward. If he, I mean, during this moratorium, he can continue to do work with his architect and his plans and everything that he's going to need before we can do anything anyway. Am, am I correct?
Absolutely.
But does he, because we're not moving forward? I mean, would, would you risk spending that money?
Again, that comes down to a, a choice of his and it may be that by doing that, he's got better ammunition for convincing us of a way and what should be approved or what not approved kind of thing. And so he may see it as, yeah, it's worth the investment because it's still open.
Yeah, that, that's one way. The other way he could say is, I'm going to go visit with other surrounding communities and see if I can get something done quicker.
It, it, that takes me back. We, we bought a house in, in McPherson that we turned into a, a weekend retreat for like needlepoint and that kind of stuff. And there was nothing in the zoning that allowed us to do it. So we had a condition on the, our offer to buy that it be approved. Well, it came to a point that essentially they were going to. Well, it came to a point that essentially they were going to have to write a whole new section of the zoning ordinance to allow it and it was going to take time to do it. But we were confident enough it was going to get done, that we went ahead and bought the property. So that's a decision he can make too, is that if he's feels like we're really working toward trying to get this done, then he's going to probably be willing to proceed. But if he thinks our intent is to stop it from being done, then he probably would not continue. But again, that's his decision.
Was he aware of this, commissioner was going to be discussing this tonight?
Yeah, I told him about it after our meeting last week, uh, that there was going back to the planning commission, so.
Would have been nice in a way if he could have been here just to.
Yeah.
Better sense about what he's.
Some of his, you know, he was at, he was at the council meeting and provided some answers, but I, you know, I don't think that he's got it nailed down enough to, to really. Say for, say for sure what it's going to be.
So he hasn't.
Huge risk.
He hasn't pulled this.
Yeah, the Marion Record reported that they had the deal had fallen through, but um, they, they actually seem to be working, uh, Russell Groves and he to- together on this now, because Russell was acting well. So if Russell still owns the property, as far as I know, and unless something's changed recently, so. Uh, I think they've shifted gears a little bit. It sounded like maybe they were looking at duplexes, some kind of duplex situation. Um, as an option too, so there's a lot of moving parts to this, uh, so it's, it's hard to. Again, it's hard to regulate something that you don't really know.
Duplexes with the.
So the one house that's out there, that's part of that whole strip there, right? Well, that's already there.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question for clarification?
Okay.
I'm curious, the previous discussion about a conditional use permit within the mobile home zoning. Is that what is currently, uh, uh, been granted?
No, they've got a conditional use permit to operate as an Airbnb.
Okay, and it has nothing to do with the type of construction?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, also was the discussion that you had was, did it pertain anything to the residential zoning on Third Street? Under a conditional use permit?
The previous discussion on, uh, conditional use?
Yeah, this evening that you were discussing, were you also talking about the, uh, residential zoning?
Yeah, what, we discussed the possibility of using a conditional.
Okay, thank you.
I would entertain a motion if somebody would care to make one.
Uh, can I make a comment? Mark Pankretz, two eighteen North Adams. Uh, on page thirty five in Building and Uses Affected, section two, it says, no structure shall be moved into the city of Hillsborough and located on individual lot of parcel as an individual unit. And no structure shall be moved from one area to another within the city except after final approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. If that's current, uh, I have the latest version of that.
I don't have it in front of me, I don't know.
Yeah, he, he's right, but is, is, is a container a structure or is it a piece of building material?
Well, that's the question.
Here we are.
Here we are, trying to figure that out, yeah.
That's another thing.
Another question, yeah.
Hash this out a little bit.
Great set of answers, unfortunately.
Yeah.
We ready to take some action or?
How long of moratorium do we need, you think?
I would say sixty days would probably, you know, we can hammer, we'll get something, and if you, if you find sixty days isn't long enough, you can always ask for more.
And then are we going to do a subcommittee? To visit about this?
Yeah.
Or are we getting, is it, we're going to get, give it to Ben and tell him to research it? I mean. I hate to just set it and not do anything with, right, yeah.
Well, yeah, we've, we've got to have some mechanism for us to gather information.
Right.
And so, but we can continue to address it and, and I yeah, depending on how that works, sixty days, I was thinking more like ninety, because that would be two meetings and then a meeting to say this is what we want. But, um, I'm good with sixty two, because we can ask, like you said, we can ask for an extension, but, um, yeah, I think the going out and gathering information is going to have to be on city staff.
Yeah, we would do that, yeah.
And whether we want to insert a, some extra meetings somewhere in there, or whether we want to do it during our regular monthly meetings, that's.
That would be completely up to you guys. If you, we'll, we'll be here if you want to schedule something.
And we don't need to schedule it now, we.
Come back later and do it.
Do we know at this point of any? Any, uh, agenda items for our meeting potentially at the end of February, a month from now? Or, uh, the, any requests been made by anybody?
Yeah, we have one that, uh, potentially could come up, uh, zoning, I guess it'd be a zoning change, right? In the industrial area related to Barkman Honey. Potentially could be coming up, that, that'll be an interesting one too. Um, but yeah, if that, if that does come through, then it would be on this, uh, February agenda, assuming we had time to.
Well, then I'd, I'd make a motion that we, we recommend to the city council that they impose a uh, sixty day moratorium on any action concerning uh, the use of.
Intermodal shipping.
Intermodal shipping containers as residential dwellings and, um, then separate from that motion, uh, would move that we table this issue until our next meeting unless special meeting is called earlier than that. So it's actually two separate motions.
Okay, let's take the first motion first. Is there a second to that?
Well, send. You get it.
It's a tie. Okay, motion is to recommend sixty day moratorium for residential use. Now that you use the term residential use, that, that, that does not prevent anybody in the meantime from putting uh, a shipping container in as a storage facility, is that correct?
Correct, it sounds like to me, yeah. I don't, I personally don't see that we have a concern about that.
And that's fine, I just wanting to be sure we're all clear. Okay, got a motion and second, any further comment before I ask for, for a vote? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Oppose, no. Motion has carried. Hey, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, move to table. This issue and till our next regular meeting or special meeting is called earlier than that.
What do we see? Well, okay, go ahead. I guess we need to have a second before we can discuss. Is there a second to that? Okay, what do we see as being the case if there is, if the request for rezoning that's been mentioned here does not happen between the next meeting, are we? Are we presuming that we would meet on this matter, even though we don't have anything else, any other reason to meet?
There was one that came in yesterday, a request that came in yesterday.
That's right.
Yes, for an Airbnb, so there is another, another request.
We will be here a month from now regardless.
It is a residence already.
Someone is not going to move in around ten green Ben and make a B and B.
Pretty unlikely.
Okay. Anything else before we move on into the?
Well, we haven't.
No, that's right.
But.
I guess we didn't.
My question would be is then if we table this until our next meeting, if we're not ready at that point, the research hasn't been done, I guess we can just table it again at the next meeting? Okay.
Or we can just cancel that meeting. I said at our next regular meeting, so if we don't have. But if we do have a meeting, then it would be on the. And I guess, yeah, I think it's supposed to have a purpose for the table and the purpose of the table would be to give staff time to provide additional input.
Well, even if there wasn't another item for that meeting, I think if their staff had some more updates for us, it'd be worthwhile meeting to get more information to discuss.
I think it would.
Time isn't that far out.
Yeah, I think it would be, but.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I had forgotten that we hadn't voted on that.
It happens.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, no. Motion has carried.
Um, if I can, before we move on to the
Sure.
next issue, uh, the mention of somebody wanting an, an Airbnb. Can we somehow get away from that term unless they are speci- I mean, that's a, a copyrighted, it's a specific company.
Right.
And some of these people are not listing their houses through Airbnb. So we need, I think, need to quit saying we're approving something for an Airbnb, because technically then if they don't go through Airbnb, they shouldn't be renting their place out in that fashion.
So I guess.
Do you have a suggestion?
Temporary vacation.
Well, I, I don't know that our city ordinance, um, defines a, a B and B as being something where the owner lives there. So it's just a B and B.
Definitely do that.
A B and B with no breakfast.
But it's nothing specifically for breakfast.
The city ordinance is, I think it would just be a B and B.
Yeah.
How they, how they market it is up to them.
True, good point. Okay, next agenda item is agricultural exemption language. Uh, refresh your memories a little bit on, on that if you would.
Yeah, so the last planning commission meeting, we talked a little bit about the agricultural exemption language, uh, which I've got printed there for you. Um, we, we talked about that as, you know, the way it's written, it's, it's kind of poorly written and it would allow basically any kind of agricultural use if you're trying to do it for profit at any, any zone, anywhere in the city, which I don't think is the intention of it. So what we've, we've kind of come to the discussion or, you know, and looking at it and researching it, I, I don't know that it would be anything we need to salvage necessarily, and so I would recommend just striking it. But you know, you could do some, you could re-go, go to the trouble to rewrite it if you wanted to. Um, but I don't know that it necessarily, it's not an issue that comes up a ton anyway, but uh, it could if somebody wanted to decide to, you know, have a commercial chicken operation and a lot next to my house or something like that.
Well, and we did have this come up not too long.
Right.
Well, it's, well, we're here.
Yeah.
I know this was on the agenda base, so go ahead. If, if I may, I, I'm not sure we're reading the ordinance correctly, um, because it says the ordinance shall not apply to land and buildings under one ownership, which are used exclusively for agricultural purposes, so long as such land and buildings are used for agricultural purposes and not otherwise. I would interpret that, it doesn't say land or buildings, it says land and buildings. So I would interpret that as the land and all the buildings on that land are e- under one ownership and that they're all used strictly for agricultural purpose. So what I envision it means is if somebody has some land out here and has a barn on it. Then that barn doesn't have to meet, you know, it's, and that barn is used for agricultural purposes. But if there's a residence on it, that residence is used for non-agricultural purposes, that building. Therefore, it would not apply to this exemption.
Maybe Tracy's got his cows sleeping in the house.
And, and, yeah, and in, in which case, I think the appropriate action, if that is how this was intended to be um, done would be to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and since, and request variance. And given that we've already, the city has basically already said he could do this. And, you know, the, the chances would be good of getting that variance at the Board of Zoning Appeals. As opposed to doing away with that, because where this comes into play is you got a partial land out here that somebody has purchased and they're going to build houses on it and they get it all platted out and nobody buys lots. And they can still continue to do the agricultural purposes on it, hay, pasture, whatever they want to do. Until such time as somebody buys a lot and builds a house in that lot. When somebody else buys the lot, that lot would then not be included with the other part. And I think that's what this is intended for, is that that farmland does not all of a sudden have restrictions of, well, you can't have a fence within the property setback line, so you got a bunch of little fences running through the place and that kind of stuff. Um, but I think it should be read as land and buildings together as opposed to land or buildings. So I think it is important and I think that's what it was intended to be.
In, in the definition of agricultural, you had to help me out here, Ben, there, they do allow for residential residential property within that. Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not, but this isn't talking about zoning, this is talking about the buildings are used for agricultural purposes. The one allows a, a residence to be built on agricultural property. As opposed to the residence is being used for agricultural purposes. So I don't think a residence would be considered as used for agricultural purposes.
Yeah, I think we need to review that, because I don't know, I don't know exactly how that, the definition is written, or, because I don't, I don't think that's exactly right, but.
But I think that's the intent.
That was probably the intent, probably right.
Because if you had a barn out there, you wouldn't want to have to tear your barn down because it ran across two
Right.
lot lines that you platted. Or it was too close or whatever, no. Well, is in, pardon my ask. If somebody, for example, in the garage parked their tractor, would that mean, you know, all of a sudden the house, which is part attached to the house? No, because it says, it, it says exclusively. So only four, got it. Yeah, one ownership which are used exclusively for agricultural purposes.
So I think we probably have a, I, I think there, there are some definitions we need to clarify with this too, I think, Gary, so let's. I, I would recommend just not taking any action on it and we can revisit this and maybe come back to it and figure out what, what, what if anything we need to do. I think you're right about the intent, that makes some sense to me, so we'll have to go back and look at it, do a little more research on it.
Are you saying that at some point, if you feel like action is needed, you will come back and to us and?
A little more research on it, make sure that we got, got all the definitions in line, because the way we were reading it didn't quite. I don't, we're not reading it the same way as you're interpreting, which I think is the right way to look at it, so we'll do some more work on it.
Because that's, I mean, typically that's what happens when you plant an area.
Right.
Even in a growing town, people keep farming it until.
Farm until while we've got, yeah.
Because.
City owns a lot of property.
Tax people don't change the tax until you quit farming.
And there's a tax advantage in, in deeming it agricultural land rather than. Okay. We're up to city administrators report then.
Uh, just want to update you on the conditional use case that we heard in September, or September, December. Uh, I went to the council on the fourth and they approved that, so that's the, um, the B and B use there. Uh, I went to the council on the fourth and, uh, they approved that, so that's the, um, the B and B use there, um. So that's, that went through, uh, and then appointments, we actually, our, our appointments got a little out of whack and so that's why I was asking everybody if they wanted to continue being on board, um, because there were some that were not quite right, some who were expired, we just hadn't been.
So we didn't have the same number?
Yeah, things weren't quite, yeah, things weren't quite right, so we've set that right. Um, so we reappointed Gary and then Krista. Uh, Gary got a one year term, so you're back on the right schedule. Uh, Krista Hendricks got a two year term, uh, Kent, you got a, a three year term, and Jesse, you got a three year term. Uh, you, you're still good and you're still good.
Right.
Uh, but then we, we do have, we did have Pete Rickert, who decided to, to leave the county, the commission, cause he, I, I didn't think he ever makes a meeting, so. And then, um, June, June also opted out, so we do have an open slot for somebody who lives out of town, if you know anybody. We thought we had somebody and, um, he's kind of backed off a little bit, but may still come back to the table. And then we'll have one in-town person, so if you know anybody or.
They can live.
Anywhere in town.
I mean, out in the country?
Yep.
Don't have to be within certain mileage, right?
Uh, I don't believe so. I think it just has to be out of town. It's helpful if they're, you know, not from Kansas City or something like that, but, yeah, within a reasonable distance. Yeah. No, there's not, I don't know, circle, so.
I had somebody in mind after I read that. Didn't come to me, so if it does, I'll.
Okay, please. It's one of the harder jobs, um, believe it or not, finding people to serve on boards and committees, so any help you can provide is much appreciated. And that's all I had, so.
Okay. One more opportunity. Any questions or comments on these matters or, or any other before we adjourn? If not, the chair will declare the meeting as adjourned. Thank you.
And I will keep prodding that one.